Thursday, September 26. At this point, I would ask that we rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Dooley is absent tonight, excused, and trustee Havelgas has volunteered to take over those secretary responsibilities, and at this point, I'll ask her to do the roll call.
All right, trustee Bartlett.
Here.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley is absent, excused. Trustee Havelgas, here. Trustee Gualapu.
Here.
Trustee Stirring.
Here.
Student Representative DeMour.
Here.
Student Representative Duhadula is absent, excused.
Thank you. This time, I'd ask that we look at our agenda and if it is acceptable to approve the agenda. Julie, I bet you have an addition.
I do. I have one addition to add to your Matters for Board Action, which would be a number five on page three. Just received information today about the Thanksgiving and celebration of staff for the city and their city event, which will take place on November 22nd. So I'm looking for a consideration of the board to close at 5:00 on Friday, November 22nd, in order for staff to attend and have time to get home, change, perhaps bring a guest with them, and then be at the party by 6:30.
Close at 5?
Close at 5:00, November 22nd.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion in regard to the agenda? If not, I would ask that we call for the approval of the agenda as written with the addition for item number five under Matters for Library Board Action, that the staff be allowed to be released at 5:00 on Thursday, November 22nd, so they have time to attend the appreciation dinner.
Friday, November 22nd.
Friday, oh, did I say Friday? I'm sorry, Friday.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been approved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, call vote, please.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Havelgas says yes. Motion carries 6-0.
Next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of the approved minutes of our last meeting, which were August 22, 2024, and the approval of the claims and warrants for accounts 271 and 272, which is contained in pages 10 through 12 of our booklet.
Move to approve.
I'll go second.
Been moved and approved, been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Discussion? If not, would you call, call vote, please?
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Havelgas, yes. Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Next item is Presentations. I'll turn it over to Julie.
We have a few presentations. The first one that I'm going to start with is to introduce Lori Lowry and Mary Anne Zermulon, and I'm going to have them both come up. I want to introduce them to you, the board. These are two positions that we had many years ago due to retirement. We did not fill the positions almost 10 years ago now it's been, but I appreciate the opportunity from the board to be able to bring these two positions back. They're going to be very helpful to me over the next couple of years as we have been talking about potentially going out and asking for additional operational money, also positioning an opportunity to provide better communication in the building by having these assistant directors as part of our team and working closely with the department heads that are already doing great work in the building. So the first person is Mary Anne Zermulon. Mary Anne has actually been with us. If you, if you saw the biography and little bit of information that I provided to you on page 36, this was an opportunity to hire within. Mary Anne has been the head of Support Services for many years now, has been leading a fantastic team, and over the last year has had the opportunity, based on me asking and seeing if she wanted to take on a new role, she will, she is now managing the Support Services Department, the Information Technology Department, and the Facilities Department. Her title is Assistant Director of Building Operations. I'm very excited to introduce you to her because she's bringing a great amount of expertise when it comes to project management. We're already seeing a lot of big changes as it comes to organization and the way that those departments are going to be looked at and hopefully improved upon over the next few years and into the future. So I'm very, whoops, I'm very happy to introduce Mary Anne Zermulon to all of you. So please give her a round. And next to her is Lori Lowry. Lori has just moved from Florida up to the Michigan area. We don't know why, but we're happy she's here. She is now taking on the role of Assistant Director of Public Services. She's going to be working very closely with our Information Services Team, which, which is our librarians, our programming coordinator, our customer service assistant, team supervisor. So a lot of the team does most of, you know, your programming and outreach, plus all of our collection development, some very major roles in, you know, in the department as well and in the library. She brings, from her bio, over 20 years of experience, has been in a management role in the past in libraries, and she will also be working on some strategic planning as well. So I'm very excited to have Lori, and please help me welcome her to our organization. As you can see from my face, I'm very, very, again, appreciative of this board to understand the need that we, that we needed to bring back, to have that additional management in order for other things to be done. I was doing three jobs. I'm, I can tell you, probably in the last year, not so well. I don't mind telling you that, and it's because there's so much coming up with our library and what we're doing. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to put some new people and new ideas and opportunities into the hands of these two amazing people that will work with us and hopefully lead our organization for great things. So thank you. Thank you both. Okay, our next is my favorite part of the, the year, and that is our 2024 Staff Awards. We have 12 people that are being recognized. Unfortunately, not all of them could make it tonight, but a majority are here this evening, and I will call up each individual person. We do have certificates for them. These were awards that were nominated mostly by the staff themselves. The Above and Beyond Award is the one award that the management team actually awards and looks and highlights staff in, in the building. And so the Above and Beyond Award, I will first ask for Bill Babinek to come up. Bill? And I'd like to read a little bit about Bill. Bill makes every effort to go above and beyond. When he and I close the building, he always makes a purposeful effort to make sure the staff leaves the building and gets to their cars safely. I have seen him worry about those who are parked on other sides of the building and stand vigil until he knows they are on their way. Many people will say, "How are you doing?" to me, but when Bill asks, "How am I doing?", I can see genuine interest and caring. He listens and offers encouragement or sympathy or whatever is needed. Bill is an honest and principled person, and he makes an effort to do an honest job, and he will not fail to hold a door with a smile. Thank you so much, Bill. Dana Van Oost is not here tonight. She is our Communications Manager. I will make sure that I present her certificate to her. I'll leave you to read that information, just so that we can keep moving, if that's okay. The next person that I am going to, I can't think if she's just here. Oh, no, Arom is not here, so that's, that is another person that I will, I will be making sure gets a certificate. Next person, I'm moving down. Kristen is also not here. She's our HR specialist. But the next person is Emily Brush. Emily? Here you go. You're welcome. Thank you. And I'm going to read a little bit about Emily. Emily has had an outstanding year. She completed approximately 140 storytimes at local preschools, in addition to regular storytimes and monthly field trips from the Novi Early Childhood Special Education Class at NPL. A highlight of the year is her mentorship of our early literacy intern, Jen McCardle, who's also here tonight. Emily created a comprehensive curriculum to give Jen a well-rounded internship, including projects in collections, outreach, programming, and reference services. For Read and Recreation Bingo Challenge, part, oh, sorry, for, for example, together they created a Story Walk that was featured in Pavilion Shore Park as part of the Read and Recreation Bingo Challenge, partner, which was a partnership between NPL and the Novi Parks and Rec Department, and was enjoyed by many Novi residents. She also submitted over 20 reviews for School Library Journal, which is a very prominent magazine that our librarians use in order to make collections, collection selections. So it's very important to have that feedback from someone who's reading. NPL isn't the only one who noticed her excellent work. She was featured in the MLA newsletter for her work as an MLA ambassador on the Mitten Award Workshop and presented a poster at MLA Spring Institute called "It's a Beautiful Day for Dramatic Play", featuring her work on many creative dramatic play programs for our youngest patrons. Congratulations, Emily. Next is our Customer Service Award. This award recognizes a staff member that has provided the most consistent and most positive customer service to our NPL patrons or staff members over the past year. This person is always greeting patrons with a smile. This staff person goes above and beyond to assist a patron or fellow NPL employee, and this person is calm in chaotic situations. And our first person that we are recognizing tonight is Josefa Casas. Here's a little bit about Josefa. Josefa gives phenomenal customer service to patrons of all ages. She has gotten to know many of our regular teens after school and always has a positive approach, even when she has to enforce a policy, which is not easy. She greets everyone with a smile and offers tours to her new, to the new patrons. She gives detailed reports that help ensure continuity of care. I've seen her assist patrons in both English and Spanish to get connected to the library information they need. Josefa is a person that gives it all regarding this award, to help patrons whose English is not their first language, to calm rambunctious teenagers in respectful manner, in a respectful manner, and aid them with respecting the space, to help a patron with a book search or IQ question, and being everyone's, and being everyone's, whether they are in the adult or youth departments, listening coworker. Josefa has proven on numerous occasions that her heart is with NPL, and I am grateful to recommend her for this award. In addition, Josefa handles the public, especially the high schoolers, with poise, calmness, and reasonable responses that not only deflects potential situations, but gets individuals on board to behave and treat the library respectfully. She is a gem, and we are lucky to have her on our staff. Congratulations, Josefa. Our next award is the Community Champion Award. This award recognizes a staff member that has put themselves out in the Novi community and has worked with a resident, or maybe a Novi group or business, to champion library services and build library connections with NPL. How was the relationship formed? What impact was made for NPL with the student or group or business connection is what we wanted to find out. And so this award goes to Shannon O'Leary. Here are a few things about Shannon. Shannon has developed a phenomenal relationship with Novi High School students and teachers through the AAPI Heritage Festival and the ISTP Program. She also wonderfully represents the library at various cultural events and through her trip to Japan this year. Shannon saved us a ton of money. We let her have the library credit card, and she bought books in Japanese for us and brought, bought way more because of her being able to travel over and not have to deal with the vendors that we sometimes deal with. It was wonderful. She came home with a suitcase full. Shannon participates in many programs within the Asian community. Her ability to connect with the community and understand the need and want for international materials is unraveled. Shannon leads this pursuit with her heart, and it always shows. Shannon O'Leary has had such a large amount of involvement with the Novi community, again from the API Heritage Festival to the Hinematsuri Festival. She is shown to be a dedicated and hardworking individual, representing the best that NPL has to offer. She does wonderful work with our international community. Someone wrote, "I was particularly impressed with her mentorship of the dear Asian youth kids from the high school." And she has also been working with the Great Lakes Ja, Ja, Japan Exchange Teaching Program Alumni Association as well, and helps us organize many sponsored programs, including Origami. Shannon has developed such events with outreach. She attends and represents the library in such a positive way, and we, we so appreciate her. Shannon, congratulations and thank you. Next, we've added a few more awards, if you can tell. We've, we feel that we needed to highlight a few more employees for all the good that's being done. The next award is a new one called the Excellent Feedback Award, and that individual is Ray Minella. Okay, are you ready? Ray is not afraid to speak up when she has ideas, questions, or concerns to share with the team. She is extremely supportive of others' ideas and is always one of the first staff members to figure out a solution to a problem or try to remedy a disagreement. I know I don't just speak for myself when I say her participation on any committee is most welcome. Ray has been very forthcoming in community, in committee meetings. She helps create a comfortable atmosphere for staff to offer feedback, and she also offers constructive feedback about issues. "I have been on multiple committees," one, one staff member wrote, "with Ray, and admire her ability to bring constructive feedback and thoughtful discussion to these meetings. She always seems prepared, has good ideas to share, and is also generous in listening to others, building off ideas and helping the group stay on topic." Ray's passion for NPL is obvious in every committee and discussion she takes part in. She is always willing to listen to others and consider their thoughts. I feel better knowing that she is here to contribute. And also, I want to note that Ray is part of our Historical Commission, and she's done a fantastic job. She took the shoes of, of Betty Lang, which was not an easy task, and has done just a fantastic job. I see Kathy shaking her head, because we know that. So congratulations, Ray. Thank you. Next award, which is new, is called the Always Growing Award, and this award recognizes a staff member that is always looking to grow in new ways, both professional and personally. Growth isn't limited to career performance, but also considers how a staff member can grow personally as a leader or coworker. And this year, that person is Jen McCardle. Jen's new to our organization, and what's also very exciting about Jen is she was an intern and then was offered a full-time position with us this past year. We're very excited to be offering students an opportunity in our building and then hopefully growing them and then keeping them. So this is a little bit about Jen and what a staff person said. "Jen has been a wonderful addition to the NPL community, and it has been wonderful to watch, to see her grow from an MLS student intern into a full-fledged librarian." Jen McCardle has shown tremendous growth throughout her internship at NPL, leading to a full-time librarian position once she received her master's degree. As an intern, she jumped in right away, taking on projects, joining committees, and always asking a lot of good questions, which showed that she was looking to continually learn about our library and our community. Jen recently graduated with her MLIS degree from, from Wayne State University, and we are proud to have welcomed her into our library and as a librarian. Jen's storytimes are so fun and engaging. Her variety of themed outfits, as you can see today, especially her dresses, are the perfect complement to her fun storytimes that bring a smile to our young patrons' faces. Way to go, Jen, and welcome to our team. Thank you. The next award is Innovation and Creativity. That does go to Mary Robinson. Mary's not here tonight. I will make sure that she does receive her certificate. Next is Helping Hand, and that actually goes to Joe. He's not here this evening either. He works with our Facilities Department. I will make sure that he is recognized. Our next and final award of the evening goes to, it's a new award called Inclusivity Award. This award recognizes a staff member who always makes patrons and staff members feel included, welcomed, valued, and appreciated. They give credit where credit is due and make others shine. This award is going to Emma DiSenso. Here's a little bit about Emma. Emma is gracious and wonderful to everyone and always goes the extra mile to make sure everyone feels included and appreciated. She runs a book club for staff members, which is on a Friday night, which I know the staff is enjoying, and made sure that all departments were welcome with that opportunity. She even sends out a summary afterward for those of us who are not able to make it. Emma is a star who makes everyone around her feel appreciated, valued, and seen. She is always quick to say thank you to her colleagues and give kudos when problems have been solved or when communications are put out to keep staff informed about something. Emma was brand-new to NPL this year, but she immediately jumped in and looked for ways to bring staff together and contribute positively, positively to staff morale. She formed an employee book club, which we've mentioned, and it meets monthly. She also had us dancing one morning. She invited us all down to dance. She goes, she does go the extra mile, and she has been helping patrons with information and resources and connecting them to the Lakeshore Lending Library and the park over there with some programs that are being held. Emma is always kind and is the first to show appreciation. She is always thankful. From the moment you meet Emma, you feel listened to, seen, and warmly embraced, literally and figuratively. She is interested in so many things and is always eager to learn things, which makes her coworkers feel appreciated. Congratulations, Emma. So we have, as you can see, some amazing stars that we're recognizing tonight. I do believe we have a fabulous team. We have just under 70 employees. I wish I could bring all of them. We will be celebrating with these individuals. President Stirring and I will be taking them to dinner. That's one of the ways that we say thank you and let them know. And then I encourage all of our staff to continue to be looking at stars in our buildings so that they can be nominated and, and honored in the future. I'm very, I feel very blessed to be working with such an amazing group. This is, this is them. This is, this is who makes me look good to you. This is the group. So I want to, again, thank you for your support, because you support opportunities for me to do this and for us to recognize my team, and I do appreciate it. To go along with that, if you look on page 42, we did a couple of things this year. One, we all got new parking passes, which were definitely needed. They were all falling apart. We, we made sure that they were, you know, specific to Novi Library. And then we made an initiative to make sure we're taking care of employees so that they have a place to park. We were running into those issues. When we have large events on the campus, at the high school and at the city, sometimes our employees weren't able to find a parking place when they came to work. So on the south end of the parking lot, we have designated 24 spots and then four spots specifically to recognize Employee of the Month. I, I want to thank you for letting me do that, because that means that they have a designated place to, to, to park and know where they're going to be and not have to worry if we're on, if we've got busy events and things going on. And it happens a lot on weekends and evenings when the staff might be coming in. I recently took a comment, unfortunately, from a community member that was upset that we had four employee signs. And here's my response. "I want the opportunity to recognize more than one, because I have great people, and so I'm dedicated to having more than one spot there for that purpose." We have 70 employees. That's not even 10% of our employees that we're recognizing once, once a month. So I hope the board is okay with that decision, because I do feel that our people need to be recognized and have an opportunity to be thanked, and I feel like that's a way to do that. Thank you.
It's exciting to see so many members of the staff here. Many times, when, when most of the staff is not here and Julie is presenting things to us and we're recognizing awards and accomplishments and stuff like that, that, well, Julie is here, so we thank her for the accomplishment, and she's quick to pass that on to all the staff members. So it's nice to, to put some faces with those comments that come from Julie when we receive all the statistics that we're proud of, the events that we have. And she always passes it on, and now we get to see some of those faces. And I'm sure there's some other faces we don't get to see tonight as well, but we welcome you all, and we thank you so much for the great job that you're doing. You make us all look good.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I think they all want to go home.
I blame you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have the opportunity for public comment.
Nope. Can I, I'm sorry. We have a wonderful presentation to bear.
Oh, oh, I didn't see there. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
She's hiding.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Our wonderful presentation.
Susan, come up.
Susan Johnson.
Let's see if I can. There we go. Run this without a mouse. I wonder if you click on it.
Click down on that bottom thing.
Is there a search?
There's usual.
Isn't it this thing right here?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
Is this the icon here?
That should be.
Is that it? Okay. I think.
Usually it's up, right? Now it's down. Okay.
Over, over, two more. Think that, that's, yeah, swatch it down.
Yay.
I just want this, though, because I didn't have three. I use the same presentation every year. I just give you my number.
Okay.
Let's see. Full screen? Well, oh, should look up. Now I have to get back to the beginning, which I can do.
Should be able.
Yep. There we go. Okay, I, first of all, I want to say that the people who were just here, it is a pleasure, the friends, to be able to support them. Last year, we funded staff logo wear for them. We funded staff, some sit-down training and a luncheon associated with their Service Day, as well as we have a party and Dana gets us all food and the friends and the staff have a nice luncheon. So it's our pleasure to be able to appreciate the staff in that way. So this year, we ended up giving $26,075 to the library. That was split among annual contributions, the things we do every year, $16,565, and wish lists, $12,733. This was a little under, perhaps, other years. The lending library kiosk, we were, Julie wasn't able to, I don't know if it's a programming issue, you know, computers, because they're trying to do library cards from the kiosk. So we moved that to 2025, so we just took the 2,500 associated with that and moved it to this coming year. So that's in our budget for this year. The Book Nook, believe it or not, in this age of readers, of electronic readers, we made almost $30,000 in book sales. That is pretty incredible. The Book Nook itself, sales from the Book Nook was almost $25,000. Internet sales, $1,000. Community Read, for the Community Read, we sell books for them, and $3,200 from thrift. So it was a good year from a book sales perspective. We kept, we kept, keep waiting for when it's going to go down, but... And this year, look at that, $8,000 in memberships, up over $1,000, almost $1,000 from last year. We have such incredible members. We, and a lot of them are here, so we very much appreciate it. We have 236 memberships this past year, 64 new members. Now, 20 of those were free. We do a raffle at Christmas, and if you're not a member, we give you a free one-year membership, so that's what that represents. But we have 33 benefactor memberships. That's $100 or more every year. So that really helps. I mean, you add 8,000 to our Book Nook sales, and we can do quite a bit for the library and love doing it. do quite a bit for the library and love doing it. Fundraising, our Giving Tree is still our biggest fundraiser. We had twenty-three fifty for that this year. Donations, twenty-seven thirty-seven, and we have an exciting donation for next year. So, looking forward, a longtime friend who says, "Sue, just don't put my name in anything," gave us five thousand dollars. She would like that to go toward accessibility for people with special needs, whether it's arthritic hands. And this is pretty exciting that the iCube is looking at making some of these things so that people with arthritis can better grip. They're actually designed for grip. I, when Mary told me about this, I thought that was pretty incredible. We have two new members, thank goodness, because I'm not going to be president for my life. I, we've got to find people who are as enthusiastic about this as we are. But we do have an aging board, so, so it is a problem. And Donna Edie is a wonderful, wonderful person. She has stepped in. She's already gotten involved, helped me with the raffle on Songfest. She was at Kaleidoscope the other night. It's just a pleasure to work with her. And Megs Beller is a friend. Mary Angela Winter came on, hmm, two years ago, maybe. And she keeps bringing people on, and that's just fantastic. Megs has a, a background in teaching, and we are going to explore starting up our scholarship again. We dropped our, our high school scholarship because we just couldn't get anybody involved. But when we presented, we did, we support summer interns for summer reading, and when the two of them came for this year and got their checks, we just had an incredible conversation with them. They were wonderful kids. They were outgoing. They told us all about what they enjoyed, about the whole experience. And one of the things they really liked was going through the process, being interviewed, having a selection process, having that experience. They, they were just a couple of really, really nice kids who were very enthusiastic. So, based on that, I think we're going to see whether we can't work with the high school and reinstate our, our scholarship. We can't really do a scholarship for someone who's in, who's in the library science curriculum because you don't start that, as I understand, as, that's not an undergrad program. You have to go through your undergrad program and then take that as a master's. So, we broadened it to, you know, English Studies and that sort of thing. We're going to get, we're funding part of Senior Day this year, perhaps all of Senior Day. We're glad to do that. That was such a spectacular event last year that we were very glad to have the opportunity to fund that. And Songfest twenty-twenty-four, I think, was just superb.
Highest numbers.
Thanks, yes, fantastic attendance. Thanks to Gail. Magic Bus was a really, really fun. I don't know how many of you were out there doing the, lying, you know, going around with them. But it was just, Songfest was, was very much, very popular. So, we are, it is our pleasure to fund that, and the community responds to that. We had a raffle this year and made almost... Oh, shoot, six ninety or seven ninety?
Yeah, it was about seven hundred, yeah.
Almost seven hundred dollars. We put, we had raffles on three different days. That way, we kind of catch different people. We've had a raffle before where we had sixteen baskets on one day. We made three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, which was not great. So, this time, we had three different ones across them. We had eleven baskets, all donated, no cost to us, and made six-hundred-and-ninety dollars. So, that's the way we're going to continue to do it. So, it is a pleasure to support the library, to support Julie and our staff, and we'll continue to do that. We, we have a good fund right now. We have money that we've been accumulating, so.
And it's been a pleasure to work with Sue and her amazing board. You know that I create a wish list, and they love working off that wish list and making things happen when there are budget items that we don't necessarily, you know, can afford through the regular general fund. And they are the ones that always come through and provide that additional opportunity for us. So, the iCube technology, staffing, programs, events, resources, we've, you know, we've, we've started new collections because of the Friends. They truly are advocates, and Sue, thank you. I, I do hope you, I know you might not want to stay as president always, but I do hope that you will stay involved because you have been a wonderful leader with the group, and you've taught many people about our role as a library. And I think sometimes that's also important, is to understand what we do, and you understand it, and so does your board, and, and we thank you for that as well. It's, it's very much appreciated, the support you give, not only me, but the staff and our board. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you as well, Sue. I mean, and I can speak from personal experience in, in terms of the Songfest, how successful that was. I mean, that, that seems to be growing. Almost each and every event is bigger than the last. And I, and I notice also that the ages are, there's, there's a wider age band that, that are attending it now. And it seems like there's another form of media that's picking it up, and there's other, you know, other ages are attending it. But just from personal experience, that's great. And the other thing, as I've attended a couple, a couple of your, your meetings, and in addition to when we go around the table and kind of introduce ourselves, it's someone's a friend, but that friend has a friend who's, you know, I'll say, a, a large F friend, a small F friend. They're just a friend of a friend, and they're coming. And, and it's noticeable is how your group is expanding. They're picking up other people.
Yes.
You're doing more things, and it's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I just had one question. Oh, no, so I, I'm a very avid shopper at the Book Nook as well. So, I was just curious with one of the numbers, the three thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars from thrift. So, what exactly is thrift?
Thriftbooks is a reseller.
Okay.
Yeah. If you look online, thriftbooks.com, you'll see they're a reseller.
Okay, I see.
So, anything we don't think we can sell in the Book Nook, we, we now have to go through a scanning process because they were just getting overloaded with stuff they had to dispose of. And we really didn't mind that, but they didn't want to transport it. It does save the transportation cost. So, we scan it, and it either says, yes, thrift would like this because it's one they can sell, or no. So, we load them up in, in the back area of the loading dock. There are big Gaylord boxes, and the ones for them get put into that box, and then they're picked up periodically and, and taken, I think, to Chicago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's nice.
It's a great way, it's a great question, and it's a great way to show the community that things are not being thrown out. I mean, we do get things that just will never sell and also aren't in good condition, but Thriftbooks picks up on the opportunity for resale, and then the Friends now are getting a percentage back of the sales that occur online. So, we love to tell our community that not everything, you know, is, is, it'll be recycled, but hopefully we're keeping things from being thrown out.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
And now for public comment. In order to hear all the citizens' comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that the speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session. However, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. Citizens must state their first, last name, and address. Anybody from the public wish to comment to the board? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the reports. Student representative report.
All right, for the August twenty-twenty-four Library Board Student Representative Report. First up, the Tamil Summer Read-a-Thon program was held on August third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth. It was a five-week workshop designed to help children read Tamil fluently and quickly with interactive lessons and fun-filled activities provided by experienced teachers. Patrons were trained to read not only fluency, but also an understanding of the material as well. Program was hosted by Nunnan Tamil Academy. Our attendance for this event was sixty. The Escape Room Novi program was held on August seventh. Patrons experienced the ultimate escape room challenge. Working as a team made up of no more than six players, they had about twenty minutes to work together to solve complex puzzles. Our attendance was ninety. The summer reading program finale parties at Paradise Park programs were held on August twelfth and thirteenth. Registered readers in grades one through twelve were finished, who finished our summer reading program, celebrated with a free night of fun at Paradise Park, courtesy of their generous donation. Readers enjoyed a wide range of attractions such as goat carts, miniature golf, laser tag, and more at Paradise Park. Readers also enjoyed freshly baked cookies and lemonade provided by Paradise Park. We are so grateful to Paradise Park for the continued support of our summer reading program. Our attendance for these events were nine hundred. The Novi Chess Club program was held on August fifteenth and ninth, and twenty-ninth. This event provides an opportunity for teens and tweens to participate in games, learn about chess, and sharpen their skills. Our attendance was thirty-two and twenty-five respectively. The Novi Chess Club tournament was held on August seventeenth. This was a free tournament open to players of all skill levels, beginners, intermediate, and advanced. Our attendance for this tournament was eighty-two. As for the Teen Space update, the Teen Space started for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year on August twenty-sixth, concurrent with the new school year. Teen Space is held on Monday through Friday from two forty-five to five P.M., except during vacation breaks and half-days during the school year in the whole meeting room of the library. Teen Space is open to students in grades seven through twelve, and a student ID is required for admittance. During August twenty-twenty-four, there were two-hundred-and-eleven patrons who visited Teen Space. No, Teen Space was not in session on the following dates, August thirtieth for Labor Day weekend. As for the Teen Advisory Board update, TAB meetings will resume in September of twenty-twenty-four. Get involved with the library by joining our Teen Advisory Board, or otherwise known as TAB. All high school students are welcome. You do not need to be a Novi resident to participate. Share ideas for teen programs, discuss teen books, organize community service projects, and more. Meeting attendance will count as volunteer hours if you are registered in the library's teen volunteer program. You do not need to be a registered volunteer to attend TAB. If you are passionate about teen services, the library would love to have you join Teen Advisory Board. In terms of upcoming programs, we have Teen Space, a daily program held Monday through Friday from two forty-five to five P.M., Club Half, Club Half-Blood, October third, six thirty to eight P.M., Novi Chess Club, October third and October seventeenth, from seven to eight P.M., Library Open House for all ages, October sixth, two to four P.M., a no-required reading book club for high schoolers, October tenth, four to five P.M., Tween Day of the Dead, Grab and Go Kits, October eighteenth, all-day, Robotics Demonstration Day, October nineteenth, one to three P.M., Halloween Lanterns, October twenty-third, seven to eight P.M., Teen Advisory Board meeting on October twenty-fifth, three thirty to four thirty P.M. The August Teen Stop Display theme featured classics with a twist, classic stories and novels reinterpreted. On the following page, you can see the Teen Space regulations, and the pages after that include our end-of-year presentation from last night. Thank you.
Thank you all, good. That's just a lot of activities.
Yeah, she sits down and sighs. And also, Alex is very involved with this program as well, so we thank her.
We do have a question.
Yes.
What is the no-required reading book club?
So, as, it's a, it's a new program for this year, but it's basically a book club for high schoolers, and they have to read something that's not required for school. So, it just, yes, it's recreational reading. Yes, yeah.
Which is hard to have when you're, when you're, when you're, you know, very busy in high school. So, yes, fun reading.
So, it's just a good time to kind of relax with the books, so.
Great.
Yep.
Any other questions for Alex? No. Alex, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You too.
Moving on to the President's report, I'm going to start by saying October is Library Appreciation Month. And, you know, there's a number of pages in our booklet nineteen and twenty that talk about why we should appreciate our libraries. I, I'm going to just summarize it very shortly by saying that during this time, I encourage all residents, community organizations, and public officials to join in celebrating the libraries in our state. Let's go to the library, explore new worlds, and discover countless ways in which libraries enrich our lives and contribute to the benefit of this society. Let's go, October, Library Appreciation.
Love it. Love your enthusiasm. Thank you.
Secondly, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier when Sue Johnson was here from the Friends, about, at least my personal experience with Songfest this year. I mean, I managed to make about half of them, I think. I mean, ju- just wonderful to see how many people in the community come out. I think each performance is a little larger than the last. And I see that tent being not only filled up, but people standing behind it and sitting on the side and in the grass, as it's gradually, just more and more people are out there, and everybody's having a wonderful time. And so, we want to thank the Friends for doing that, Wayne Wright for hosting Paradise Park, and basically, the Friends for paying, in particular, Gail Anderson, for just doing a great job organizing that. She has the contacts in that area, and she brings the best out there.
She does. Thank you. Yes. I'll be sure to share that with her.
So.
I am hoping to bring Gail, actually, just knowing that what I appreciate is that you do bring up Gail very often because you're recognizing the amazing programs that she is planning. I've asked her to attend our October meeting so that she can give you an overview of the last year and what the programming has been like for MPL. So, she will be here in October. And then you can, you can thank her directly, along with me always saying it, but I think it's nice for her to hear as well from the board. So, thank you.
And that's all that I have. Any other board members and trustees have any experiences or things going on that they want to share with the library? Kathy?
Well, thank you. I do also want to add my thanks to Gail and, and all the staff and the people that have planned the special events. I mean, really, it's remarkable what our little library, you know, does monumental things. I mean, it's really amazing. I hear from people, you know, not in our city, but from other cities, talking about and raving about our library programming and how great it is. And a lot of those people have been coming to the concerts. And I also want to thank board members for attending, too. Thanks for, for your support.
Thank you for your support.
I think it's important for staff and for, for us to drop in whenever we can to attend these events. And one of the other popular events is, Gail also plans the day trips, the, the travel trips, and there's one tomorrow to Saginaw. But there was sort of a pop-up one that she did because she happened to go down to the train station herself with her family and saw how great it was. And right while she was there, she made arrangements to bring a group. And I think that trip filled up like in a day or two days. I mean, it filled up, which really is a testament to the popularity of these day trips that are so, you know, especially the older population, they, they love going with a group and they feel safe, and they, they know that there's somebody there that's going to look out for them. And of course, it, it never goes wrong. Anthe Analyst on the River on a sunny day really was a plus also. So, I just like, would like to thank her again for her support. It is a lot of work. If you've ever been on one of those trips, there's a lot of moving parts. You know, sometimes, you know, you arrive at a destination and they're surprised, even though you've made a reservation. For example, at the train station, we arrived, and there was a, a line all the way around the train station, people waiting to go in. And she said, "We're supposed to be able to just go in." And I said, "Well, work your magic." You know, we opened the door, and she went out there and worked her magic. And it just so happened that the security guard that she talked to when she was there with her family happened to be there that night. And they said, "Oh, sure, bring your group in." And so, our group, very sheepishly, walked in front of this long crowd and got in there. So, anyway, once again, kudos to everybody that does all the planning for all the special events and activities. We're so fortunate to have, I mean, and you can tell by the staff that received awards tonight, you know, they do this without, you know, it's, without any glory themselves, you know. They, they really work overtime many times to provide the best experience for patrons. We're so fortunate. So, anyway, that's my story. They, they really work overtime many times, uh, to provide the best experience for patrons. We're so fortunate. So, anyway, that's my story.
Anybody else? If not, I will, um, move to the next item, which is the Treasury Report. Um, Trustee Bartlett.
Uh, there's really no, um, major modifications in this month's report uh, to let the board know about. And I think our final from the city is due next month. Is that-
Yeah, the audit's being done, actually. Uh, they're actually at the city this week and next, so I, you should have an audited copy in October. It should be the final numbers.
Yeah, we should have, we should have the final numbers from last fiscal year.
Officially say, yes. And then what we do is we then create the annual report. Once we know that the audit's been created, once it's been completed, and then we'll start giving you what the annual report will look like for, for that year.
Um, a thought occurred to me, I know that we amend our budgets going forward when we know that we have additional expenses. Um, you know, last year, we, we were under budget by about a quarter of a million dollars. And, um, it's occurred to me, and I may, we ought to kick this around the Finance Committee. Should we be now looking at amending our budget for next year? And not because it's necessarily required under the accounting principles, but I think to the fact that this year we were under budget a quarter of a million dollars really was a factor in how we had made the budgets for years one, two, and three out. And so I, I think there's some significant adjustment that maybe we ought to do. And then I'm throwing it around for maybe for the Finance Committee to consider earlier and, and come back. But I, I, I think that with such a, with such a major savings, the library did such a great job this year. And, and maybe it won't be repeated next year, but I think when we did those budgets for years of, we were kinda saying, if this is what it's gonna be in two thousand-
You're gonna adjust.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, starting at that point, it's gonna be two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five. And I think there's room for a major adjustment in there.
Great, absolutely.
I think on the, on the budget, I think, I think I'd like to wait till the audited numbers are in because the primary line items were the investment line items.
They were.
The other, the other line item that we saved money on was personnel-
Yes.
Which at full employment now, we can't anticipate. I mean, our budget numbers are probably more accurate than, than, you know, what we spent last year.
Yeah.
So the savings for last year, that savings won't continue, while the revenue could. You know, I'd like to see what the city has to say as far as those numbers go with the audit.
I do, I do agree, and I do try, we do adjust. So at least President Stirling, by December, when you're doing the budget, we are making sure and bringing that budget down. And we, we definitely can, you know, bring that forward with future budgets, but I do agree with Trustee Bartlett. Personnel definitely will stand out and, and be closer to, if not over, because of some changes with, with recruiting new employees. So I wanna make sure you know that. Two, I don't know what that interest, how that will come in with revenue again this year. And that wasn't money given to me or, or made us aware of until the actual, close to the end of the year, that we knew that that interest actually came in. So, but we can. There's always, we can adjust quarterly, um, and we've, we've had some conversations already. There might be some technology that we might be doing that we know we haven't planned for, so we can do some adjustments. Yep. Nope. I, I welcome that in the Finance Committee, absolutely.
Any other questions for Finance Committee or Trustee Bartlett? If not, um, we are going to move on to the Director's Report.
Alright.
Director Farkas, tell us about-
I have a few things. I know we've touched on a couple of things already in the report, but a few things. Page thirty-four is well, is, um, recognizing our October anniversaries and years of service. Um, Pat Ameriscondry, twenty-two years as a Support Services Clerk with our, with our library. Next is Kit Ming Tang, sixteen years, Support Services as one of our shelvers. Kristen Abbott, fifteen years, Support Services. Um, she's one of our supervisors with Technical Services. And then Amy Crockett, who's right here joining us, three years, um, in our administration office as our meeting room coordinator and as your liaison as well to the board and helping us as a secretary. So congratulations, Amy.
Congratulations.
Yes, those are our anniversaries this month coming up. Um, page thirty-five, wanted to share some information. You know, we've been getting a lot of feedback from the staff. This started with strategic planning a couple of years ago, and we're always taking a pulse and always wanting to hear how we can do better. What I included in here was, on page thirty-five, is some information that we got back, feedback for the management team from the Professional Development Day that we held in August. And so I'm, we're working with a consultant by the name of Marilyn, um, Suttle. And she actually, um, hosted that particular breakout session for staff and then gave the management team this feedback and met with us just a week ago. And I wanted you to see some of the things that we're focusing on. You know, we're not perfect, absolutely, and we've got a big organization. One of the things we also struggle with is the fact that we're two floors. And sometimes communication is difficult because you do have some people that are in one department, but they're actually separated by two floors. Um, in addition to that, just the bigger we are, the bigger we grow. We do put out information in different ways because we know different people want information in different ways. So it's trying to find a balance of what works and making sure that they get that information. But I wanted to share with you just some of the things that we're working on, you know, that, um, that we'll tackle this year. We, we wanna focus on about three of these specifically. Marilyn, um, started the conversation with me and my management team last week, and she'll be coming back um, because we didn't get through everything, but then she'll help us focus on what are some things that we can address and then share with the, the full staff that we're gonna work on together as a team. And I wanted to share all that with you as well.
I actually, I've read through these. I think that's really great. And I just wanna make an observation as you were talking about your various staff members. Watching them nod as you talked about each other, it's just really great. And you can tell that you're really fostering a nice relationship amongst your whole staff, so.
They are amazing. They are. And, but it is, thank you. I appreciate that. And, but it is difficult as managers to hear everything. And, and we do try, I, you know, I, I still continue to learn that getting feedback, and that's, that's actually the biggest takeaway I took from the strategic planning that came this year. For me, um, as a, as an administrator and manager, is to get more buy-in before we make some of these decisions. And we are trying to slow down the management team and the committees and work on policies and things. And you'll see even tonight, the staff has seen it. They've had an opportunity, you know, to ask questions and, 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 um, you know, recommend some changes before it's coming to you. Because then they also then understand the language and the information before it goes out to the public. So, thank you. We, we do continue to work, but it is because of the strategic plan that a lot of this work is continuing, and I appreciate that we've got that structure in place. Um, moving on, I did share with you, you know, we had the chance, you had a chance to meet Mary Ann and, and Lori tonight. Again, thank you for that support. Um, and then it follows our lar- our library stars. Um, September on page forty-three is Library Card Sign Up, and we've been doing great. We've been seeing people in the building. Um, I absolutely love the logo. This year, it's Transformers, which really hits on the eighties and people from, you know, that era. Um, and there are very big Transformer, you know, lovers out there. So, um, I love how the ALA stays relevant, you know, and follows trends and tries to connect with all different audiences in order to make the library seem very important. So it's not an old and outdated type of, you know, campaign. They're really thinking about where, where the age group is and where you can connect. Page forty-four, wanted to give you, um, some information about, um, this is your free-on-demand online tutoring. This is tutor.com. I put it in your packet today because this is one of the databases that costs a lot of money for the library to have for our community. I wanted an opportunity to share it on camera and share with you because you are out there, you are talking about services, and I think families need to know about free tutoring online that they can get through the library. Um, we see a lot of tutors in the library, which is wonderful, and definitely in person is a good way to go. Sometimes not everyone can afford that. And so I do know that tutoring is expensive. I have been a parent who has paid it. And so there are many options here through this online resource. Um, and, and it gives you the hours from three in the, three in the afternoon to eleven o'clock that live tutors are available online for our community to utilize. They will, um, focus on math, reading, science. They will actually take papers that you might be writing and, and give back writing feedback to students who have maybe a, a writing assignment. So I, this, this resource has been around a long time and has been supported by, by public libraries for many years. And I just, even though we hammer it and we let the schools know that we have it, still doesn't get the use that I, I would hope it would. We have other resources. We are, we are going to push it this year, but if, if not, and we don't get the numbers, we do have other options. We will always have an option, but we might be looking at something else. But I wanted to just bring your attention to it because I think some of you are parents, and some of you are, are very close to neighbors who might have young children, where you could be sharing this information if you don't mind. Um, next, on page forty-five, we're getting ready for Authors Live, which is next Tuesday. We have almost a hundred people that will be in attendance at Fox Run. If you don't have a ticket and you still wanna attend, you could call tomorrow and still reserve, um, a spot to go to this luncheon. I'm very excited about the author. We are actually, um, coming into, uh, the time for our Jewish community to be celebrating. It's a timely, um, topic to be bringing Irene Miller, um, to share about her memoir. She is a Holocaust survivor. And she has done a lot of work, not only in Michigan, but across the country, to tell her story. And we're very, we're very, uh, honored to be bringing her to Fox Run. So hope, if you can, to join us. Um, forty-six, page forty-six, our Events Committee said, Julie, and, and they're so right. We, have we ever done an open house? We haven't. And here we are. We're gonna bring an open house to the community on Sunday, October sixth, for two hours. Um, open up the I Cube, the Historical Commission will open up the Local History Room. We will have cider and donuts. We will have information about how you can donate to the library to find out more, to find out about programs and resources. We have a little, small little scavenger hunt that when you come in the doors, you can take to learn a bit, learn a little bit more about the library, including our fantastic artwork. So, thank you to Trustee Burke and the Events Committee for asking about that and making that happen. And, and you see that there, and it's coming. Also, Jen McCardle, who was here, um, as one of our new librarians, I wanted to put this in and make you aware of this, a new business book club that'll be coming in the new year. Um, so if you know of anyone who would be interested from a business, um, perspective, I'm giving it to you ahead of time so that you can share in advance.
I did wanna ask about the open house. Were you able to get signage?
Signage?
Gonna get a sign?
Yes, it's coming. We ordered it. It's going to be going on, on the outside of the sign at Ten Mile. And it should be up a week before. So, yes, we are doing that.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Um, and then moving on from there, you know, don't forget Community Read. If you haven't read the book, we have fifty copies available. I, I actually think there's only just a couple sitting on the shelf right now. But take the time to read it and then come and, and celebrate with us in November. The author will be at the Novi Library on the nineteenth. Following are some wonderful reports from I T. and Facilities. Um, page fifty-six, I wanna point out to you, from our I Cube team, we have, um, coined a mascot, if you will see. This was designed by Anna Burbow. Uh, she unfortunately has left us, but before she left us, was one of her final projects, was to get our mascot up and running, and we can use this then with marketing. So you have met our wonderful QB, who is our, our cute mascot for the I Cube. And then moving along, you have some information from the Information Services Department. Uh, Dana has provided her marketing. We also have Support Services. This was the page that got added. Um, it doesn't have a page on there. It was some statistics about checkouts that I made you aware of in an, in an email, but you did get it in your packet. It is also in the packet that goes to the public. Just wanted to make you aware of that. Plus the statistics that we have that are in the packet. Also, great information from our friends. They have done some bios, um, on who they are in the community. And the Events and Marketing, uh, Committee is also looking to maybe get a little bit of information, doesn't have to be too much, about who you are and why you chose to be a board member. And we might be doing a, a, a small little bio on each of you also to put on our website, if you are comfortable. And then moving-
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
On the annual inventory report?
Yes.
As soon as I said that, I answered my own question.
You did.
That's not gonna be, this is just one time?
This is every year we get this.
Okay.
We, we do an annual-
It's not gonna be in every, we're only gonna get it once a year.
I'm just providing it to you at this point because this is some information that annually I have to provide to the city so that they have it available for their audit. And I thought it would be good to, for you to see what our collection is worth. Yeah.
I just wondered if we could get it.
Oh, oh, I won't be putting it in every month. Just wanted to give it to you just as a, a information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's it. We, um, we had, Historical Commission actually provided, um, their information from their meeting. Um, and that's all I have. I entertain any other questions, if you have any.
Having none, we will move on to the second public, uh, comment session. I see no members of the public, so we can skip through that one. And moving on to the committee reports, I'm gonna ask if any committee members or chairs want to speak about anything specific in their committee that's not being addressed in the Matters for Library Board Action report.
I'd like to point out one thing, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Page eighty-three, under the D E I Committee, and I stuck it there because it has to do with, um, the diversity in our community and the languages. Wanted to just make you aware that there are forty-eight different languages spoken in Novi homes in our community. And I think that is amazing. This is data that was given to me by the Novi Community School District. They just received it and shared it.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight languages are spoken in Novi homes.
Wow.
Yes. I think that is, I think that says a lot about this community and what, what we have uh, and what we have opportunities for. So.
Agreed.
Yeah, great info.
And for Building and Ground Committee, we had a meeting, uh, this month on ninth, uh, related to the firewall.
Yes.
Right, to upgrade the firewall.
And I'll be pulling another meeting together. Um, I do have some final numbers now, and then we'll, we can bring it to our October meeting. Mark Delmuth, yes, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
There's no more discussion in regard to committee reports. I'm gonna move on to Matters for Library Board Action. Uh, the first matter for Library Board Action is to approve new board meeting dates for two thousand twenty-five, which would be the second Thursday of the month. Uh, currently, we're meeting on the fourth Thursday of the month with a few exceptions. I think there's three exceptions that were planned for next year uh, due to scheduling conflicts and due to the holidays in November, December. So these, this is a proposal to meet on the second Thursday of each month, um, next year. And that also means that we don't have a conflict with the use of this space-
Right.
That we would have if we're meeting on the other Thursday, on Thursdays, or the third Thursday, the fourth Thursday, if we don't go on a second Thursday. If we did the second Thursday, we, we'd have this meeting room each and every month.
There are no conflicts at all for all twelve, all twelve monthly meetings, yes, in, in two thousand twenty-five. You would have run into six conflicts, um, if we kept to the fourth Thursday. When we reached out so that we could, you know, get our dates and set up things, we, we ran into that. Which is, it's gonna be a little dicey just to turn around the budget. If, if you approve this tonight, I'll be able to then change some budget dates because I've gotta work a little differently, which I will. I, I think we can do it, and then we'll be on a cycle in order, in order to do that. I just think it might work better, um, for us so that, I think it's important for us to be here. I think it's important for the community to be able to see all of you and see what the library is doing and hear about the decisions and the plans for the, for the building. If we don't, we're talking six meetings where they are at the, at the, at the library. But again, someone, the transparency is here without any question. It, it does make it a little dicey with a couple of those budget meetings, but I, I will make it work for us to move. Yeah. I don't, I know there was a, a question and concern about snowbirds. I think the board at this point, um, you know, we can work around people who might be out of town. I know, Mark, you, you said you might be out of town in January, but I think it's moving up, so that won't be a problem. But maybe February it is, but then by then, I, I don't think we're running into the problem anymore. And, and I will make sure that from a council perspective, we are obviously making sure that people can commit and be available and be on a board and, and be here because they have to for January, February, and March. I mean, we, we do need someone who is going to be wanting to be invested in the board and, and be available. So that means, you know, we don't always- So, uh, that means, you know, we don't always look for snowbirds then, or maybe the snowbirds aren't snowbirds, or, you know, I, I just think that we shouldn't worry about that. We should be looking for really good people who want to represent and to be part of the library board. I think that's more important. Yeah, just my two cents.
Open for discussion? Um, I, I think we gotta present it as a motion first, and then we can discuss it. So I'll entertain a motion, and then we can get to the point of discussing.
Move to approve.
I'll go second.
It's been moved, and it's been seconded, uh, to meet on the second Tuesday of each, or second Thursday of each month. Um, any discussion? Trustee Bartlett.
Um, I can't support this motion for all the, all, for all, all the dates. I, I am the, I am the snowbird comment, among other comments. Um, but anyways, um, I look at one in red where it says we're going to compress the budget schedule to fit. Um, that's the most important thing we do. I mean, so I think that's, that, that's an issue. The other issue we have, which I need to bring up to especially the new members of the board, last year we did a lot of work on our bylaws, a lot of work on our bylaws. We met with the city, we incurred some legal expense. Prior to last year, we had our elections in April. And that created some problems with continuity of officers, all kinds of things on that, on that regard. But it allowed everybody to get on board and join, and join the board and get, get things done. Uh, we moved our meetings to March. And it was based on us being able to complete the tasks between the end of February and the meeting in March. Now, those meetings, per the city, along with not having this room available, have to happen serially. What happens serially is first, new members are chosen. Then those new members have to go in front of a, in front of the city to swear in. Then they have to be orient, oriented. Then they have to be connect, contact, contacted by the secretary regarding, regarding the slate of officers. That whole process last year completed on March sixteenth. And I, I was the secretary. I was late for the board packet. We're now moving the board packet up to somewhere around, you know, the ninth or eighth of March. And all those things still have to be done. And the, the problem with these snowbirds is not only, um, you know, not being here for a meeting, but you're not being here for a meeting of elections. And should you be, should you be coming up for, say, renomination to the board, you have to also go through that swearing in, or you are not a member of the board. So having a meeting like around the eighth or ninth of March where somebody is, happens to be out of town, you could be taking an existing member and saying, okay, you're not going to make the swearing in, so you're not eligible to vote or be an officer. And I think if we're going to, if we're going to do this, again, we spent considerable time on the bylaws, moving this to this, this date in, in March. And last year, we even moved up the date in March, which was probably part of the problems dating because the date in March was the third week, not the fourth week-
Right.
Last year.
Yeah, that was due to a, a conflict with-
Yeah.
But it, it won't-
But, but you're moving it up to the second, moving our elections up to the second week means we're, we really need to take a look again at the bylaws after only one year. So-
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought now the city was going to be appointing people in advance in December. So we would know those people.
But the city is not, the city has stated that they are not going to swear them in till after February.
Which is not a problem if we have-
Well, it, it isn't a problem as, as long as you can get all that handled. You know, new members, you know, what's the new member's schedule to get into the city?
Right.
And, and again, by the time we went through all the orientation and the things, I mean, I, I was on it weekly, saying, where are we, where are we, where are we?
Right.
And we were able to finish by the sixteenth of March, which is past the date of-
Yeah.
When the meeting's going to be held.
I, I think, I also think they can be sworn in, they just wouldn't take their office.
Then we, then we have to remeet with the ci, again, we met with the city on all these issues.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to remeet with the city and get the city to agree to this.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, it's not just a case of the city doesn't have the room available, we, we could move it. We really need to look at how the whole process is going to work. If the city, if the city says we'll swear somebody in in February, and that, that was where we, we were, where, where we, where we were at the beginning. And we could orientate them and so forth.
Right, because-
But they had a problem with, they had a problem with swearing in too many board members at the time.
The, the new board members take place in April, right?
Yeah.
No, new, new board members, new board, board terms finish at the end of February. New board members are sat in March.
Right. So, right.
Last year, when I came on the board, I had to be sworn in before March first.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, I, I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, what meetings were conflicting with the city? Or could we just, because the regular board meeting that's scheduled now for February, according to the calendar, oh, that's twenty-four, never mind.
Yeah, yeah.
The twenty-seventh, I think.
I don't, I don't have a new board calendar because this is driving it. You don't have a twenty-twenty-five because I wanted to have this conversation and didn't give the fourth. When, what happens is, what we do first is we reach out to the city and we say, hey, here's our four Thursdays of the month. Please let us know that council chambers is available. We got an email back saying six of them were not available due to elections, is what we heard. Elections and council and other, and other things that were in this space. So I was like, I don't think that's right. I think we need to be available to our community. So that made me ask that, if we were to move it, what is a day of the week that would work? And the second Thursday is completely available without any interruption. You're talking all twelve now that can be held here instead of having a couple because of the holiday, which we always had. So no matter what, you had ten, you had ten meetings that were here. Well, now you're down to six, and I, I apologize, I don't have the dates that they told me they couldn't, um, um, make available, but Dana received them, and they were, they said it was due to election stuff and things. Those were six dates. And I'm like, okay, we're getting ready to approve the calendar for the city for twenty-twenty-five, and I like to have you in that calendar so people know when the library board meets. That's why I'm bringing it to you now so that we have that consideration. I'm-
Okay.
And it was March first. So I, you, you can be sworn in any time before March first. I don't think there's a problem with it.
When we, when we met with them, yeah, when we, we, we met with them, and they said March first because they didn't want multiple folks sworn in.
But it's, but that's two weeks before we would have our meeting.
I understand.
Yeah.
Let's say, say you had somebody who was gone the first week and a half of March, and, and even if they're an existing member.
Right.
Then they're out.
Well, do they have to be present to, to take an office? No. You, you do a slave-
You have to be present, you have to be present upstairs to swear in.
Oh, right.
If, if it's a cha, if it's a change in the, in the year, if it's either a new member-
Right.
Or a change in the, in the, it's a different term.
Yes.
It's a different term.
Okay.
Okay, so it's my understanding that you're concerned with the March meeting?
I'm concerned with the March. I would like, I would like to see March and February taken back.
Okay.
And then I, and I'd also like somebody-
To the original four?
To the original four.
To the fourth?
And I'd also like somebody to discuss with the city, because on the city's website, they clearly state, our meetings are the fourth Thursday of the month. And it's on the city website, and quite frank-
Well, they can change that.
Well, they, but they need to change that because that's potentially an open meetings violation.
Well, it, right now, it is the fourth Thursday of the month. I mean, that is-
Yeah, but, but I mean, if they're going to publish when we, when we are-
Right.
When we are meeting.
Right, we would change it if we did, absolutely.
They need to, their publishing needs to reflect our actual me, meeting.
But it's not necessarily a violation because we put it out, and if we make a change and that happens within forty-eight hours and we have to choose a new location, we've covered ourselves per OMA, just so you know. So, that happens. I mean, we, we could have something happen where, actually, we've had the library canceled due to weather, and we don't have a meeting. That can happen. I'm not worried about that because we've never violated OMA, and they would know the dates that we do typically meet, right? There might be a change, but the typical date would be the second, the second Thursday of the month now. I would entertain, I, I can tell you, I can't tell you if this room is available right now. I can't tell you if February, March is available to meet, but I can tell you that-
Can I just interject something?
Sure.
Last year, we met on February fifteenth.
Yes.
And the new proposal is February thirteenth.
Right.
So I don't see where we would have a problem-
Right.
If we kept it, if we went to the thirteenth. March, we can-
March, if you wanted that particular meeting, the fourth?
You know, and if it's not available, then that's the only one-
To the point where, you know, the secretary and everybody else gets a chance to, you know, I mean, 'cause, I mean, you, you have some type, they're gonna have like four or five days to complete it, to make the packet.
Yeah, hold on one second. I am just checking just, just myself to see that, um-
You sent out a bunch of-
Yeah. So, yeah, currently, I have it on the fourth. It, it's for, for February. We can move it to the second. In March-
Wait, wait, February?
February, February can stay the thirteenth, if, if you're wanting it to be the second. But if you're looking at March, you want it to be the fourth Thursday. I was proposing the twentieth, um, but if, if you wanna keep it to the fourth, I can.
Well, you have the thirteenth, you have March thirteenth.
Right, because that's the second Tuesday. But if you want it later, we can, we can do that particular meeting on the third Thursday, if that's what you'd like to do, just. Everything would be the second Tuesday, except the March meeting.
You said Tuesday, you mean Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday. Everything would be the second Thursday, yeah. Every meeting would be the second Thursday of the month, except the March meeting, which would be March twenty-seventh, which would be the fourth Thursday of the month.
Who's that?
For March?
That would meet, that would meet, that would meet when we decided last year, yes.
That would be March twenty-seventh.
Don't you have a conflict on that, Julie?
I can change it. Uh, I can keep what we've got. I-
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm on-
With moving enough, I'm, I'm happy to give it. Yeah. I mean, yeah, it, it's either way. But we had it for set, we had it set for the twentieth because I had a conflict, but if you'd rather keep it to the twenty-fourth-
Or is that not laid in?
Well, the twentieth should, should be, it should give you more time.
Okay.
Just, it gives you, it gives you three, it gives you three weeks.
Yes.
Rather than, rather than, you know, maybe a week and a half.
So the twentieth, would you be comfortable with that? So it would be the second Thursday of each month, except March twentieth, which is the third. I can tell you that will be a conflict because the third Thursday is a conflict with Parks and Rec. We won't be here. We can be at the city, or, sorry, we can be at the library and make it work.
But one si, one meeting not here.
Yes, it's one compared to six.
Correct.
Yes.
So for publishing, though, it would be the second Thursday, except March.
Except the March.
And, and are we suggesting going forward, that's what we're gonna try to adopt?
So do you, do you always want then?
I think, I think we have to, I think we have to handle the, because I knew, you know, city council said they try and-
Right.
You know, get people in-
So then what I would-
We have no strong, we have no guaranteed commitment.
Right.
And they have gone at times into the first meeting of March.
Right. So then what I would propose is, just for consistency, this is, this is me in a conflict in March for twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-six won't be an issue, if I know that now. You'll always then do the second Thursday of the month, but it'll be the fourth Thursday because you, we won't have a con, we shouldn't have a conflict with Parks and Rec-
Here, okay.
Right. So that's, that's what we would propose always then forward.
Okay.
This year, it'll be the third, but otherwise, it would be the fourth in, in March.
In March.
You'll have a quick turnaround for the April meeting, which is not a big deal. I don't, I'm not worried about that. You know, that, it, it all depends on what's going on at the time. If, if there's not much, it's still a meeting where you're actually then putting together your, who's taking on the role of officers. That happens at your April meeting.
No, the election of officers is the March meeting now.
Right, but they take office in April. So it's a quick turnaround-
During election and taking over.
It's a quick turnaround in those two weeks for that new person to be in that shoes. But I don't have a problem with that.
No, I see.
Well, I see. I'm one of the snowbird problems.
Oh.
And, um, some, you know, the consistency of meeting in the same day each month, um, would help me for the consider, because this time I made the mistake of booking, I was thinking we were meeting the last Mar, Monday, or last Thursday in March.
Right.
And made it, so I'd be back by then. So anything before the last Thursday in March, I won't be here in March. So I'm a-
But that would work. The twentieth, then. You'll be okay.
No, no, I won't because that's a third Thursday.
Oh, the twenty-seventh.
The twentieth is a third Thursday.
Okay, so you wanna, we can do the twenty-seventh, Mark. It's, I am-
I would be back, but I don't think you should change it just for me because that's your, that's you got a conflict.
I don't, I don't have anything in terms of like-
It's more important that you're here than I'm here.
Well, yeah. I, why don't, why don't we go with, why don't we just set the precedent because then it'll all stay the same? Let's go with the second Thursday, and the March meeting is always the fourth Thursday.
Okay.
And then that goes forward for twenty-twenty-five and on.
That works for, yeah, but I only missed one meeting, and that, and that was kind of where, where I was coming.
You're also up, you are also up for library board, too.
Right.
So if you, if you, if you could not take the oath of office the first of March, on the twentieth, not only are you not on the board, you are ineligible for office because you are not a member of the library.
But he'll be back before the twenty-seventh.
Before the twenty-seventh, he has time, exactly. What I'm saying, he has time to get the oath of office in, and everything is clean.
And Mark, I, I want you to continue, so let's just-
There are, there are, there's, there's still our air points.
I think, I think that'll work, so we're going with the second Thursday and the fourth.
The second, I like the second Thursday of the month. I prefer that myself. We, it seems like we are in conflict, um, with other programs that are going on on Thursdays. And, um, so I like the second, personally, but I'm willing to do whatever everybody else has to do. You know, as far as swearing in goes, I've never had any problem going, you know, just going in and getting sworn in the day before the meeting, or the day-
They've been very accommodating to me, too. That's never been an issue in terms of the timing. Uh, you know, unless somebody's out of town, but it's never, it's the, it's the city very accommodating in terms of swearing people in.
Right.
So then we are going with the second to, so, you got me on Tuesday. So we're going with the second Thursday, which is all the dates that are listed here, except the March date, which will be the fourth Thursday, which is March twenty-seventh. That's right. Yes.
Okay. So somebody have to make an official motion stating that?
Okay. We've got a motion, we had it seconded, we had, we got a motion, we've had it seconded. And then we've had discussion. And, um, I think based on this discussion, it would be appropriate to amend the motion. And we can do it one of two ways. We can formally amend it, or we can say that instead of meeting on Mar, uh, on the second Thursday in March, we'll meet on the fourth Thursday in March, and if that is okay with the maker of the motion-
Yes.
And the seconder of the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that is our motion now that will meet on, for next year, um, the second Thursday of each month, except the fourth Thursday in March.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
Oh, please no.
Yeah.
Carla, would you call the vote?
Absolutely. Uh, trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus says yes. Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Gawalu, Gualapu, sorry. Uh, motion passes six zero.
Wonderful, thank you. I will get, I work Sunday. I will get you all new dates and change some things on your calendars. I will also look at moving the budgets to get the budget set up now, the budget meetings based on this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The second, uh, matter for library board action, it's a first reading, accommodation and accessibility policy, page eighty-six through eighty-nine.
So this is a brand-new policy, which I'm not looking for approval this evening. Um, we have worked with the attorney. Um, our staff public policy committee has met a number of times. It was reviewed by the, by the attorney a couple of times and reviewed by full staff. Um, this is calling out and making available the fact that we now are recognizing that we will make accommodations and accessibility opportunities through the building. This is a new policy that's- This is a new policy that's actually coming pretty, um, standard in libraries, a, a number of libraries have adopted over the last few years. Um, and it, and it comes under, to be specific, you know, the DEI work that we've been doing, um, for the last few years. And just making sure that we can help people as much as we can. Um, we, we will do our very best. We know that sometimes we might not be able to do everything. But this allows language to show what we can do, um, and where our, you know, opportunities or limitations are. So I open up any thoughts. This is really a first reading for you. I am not looking for any action until October. I wanna be able to bring it back. Cause I'd, I'd like for you to read through it. If you have some questions, please feel free. In fact, I appreciate trustee Crawford has already asked me a couple of questions in email, um, about some things which I was able to answer. And so if you, if you need and want more time, that, that would be the time to do that. Absolutely.
Uh, one, one comment that I had, Julie, was in regard to service animals. I do like the distinction between, um, you know, service animals and emotional support animals. But aren't there times that there are programs in the library bringing animal in for kids' thing or something like that?
It is, but they are service animals that we're using. So they're fitting under that umbrella.
They're not just for a show or program or something? They're always service animals?
They are, have always been service animals that we work with. It's an actual organization that we work with specifically.
Okay.
Yes.
But then that solves my concern.
And I know that trustee Crawford, you had a question about, um, it was home, what was it?
Yeah.
Yes, hold on.
Yeah.
We should address it.
The very last.
I was working on looking at synonyms for, um, housebroken. You had a question for the word housebroken.
Right.
And if that wasn't a word that you felt comfortable with, because obviously it's the library and it's not a house, is there another term? So I did some digging, but I'd like to do more. And since I'll be bringing this back, I'll see if I can find something else.
You know, I was just asking if there's not something, I mean, I guess, it just, it jumped out at me when I, when I saw housebroken. And I thought, is there some other way to say?
Toilet trained?
Yeah, well, it did. So when I typed synonyms, it was toilet trained, it was. And I know that animals don't necessarily use toilets, so I, I think we, you know, I will, I'll do some digging. See if there's another option out there and bring it back if, if I find something. Otherwise, we might need that term, maybe define it, or something like that, if, if you feel comfortable.
One thing I, I learned as I was reading this, is that I did not realize we don't, we, we don't allow electric wheelchairs, or what?
No, we, we allow them.
We allow electric wheelchairs?
If they're needed.
If they're needed. We don't allow just electrical, well, if they're not mobility and they're not specific to the need, you wouldn't be just.
How do we determine that?
Well, I haven't had an issue where there's not a concern. It's been legitimate. But if we were to question, um, actually, if you saw in the packet and the comment, we had a scooter, right? Which was not accessibility or accommodation. I was trying to get that from the person to see if that was an actual.
Scooter, was it a, like a street, street scooter? Okay, so when you said scooter, some of those mobility wheelchairs are called scooters.
True.
That's a, that's a branding.
I didn't know if that's what you meant.
And in my conversations with that particular patron, I was trying to find out if there was an accommodation needed or required. That was never determined in the discussions I had. It sounded more like it was just, hey, this is my vehicle, my, my mode of transportation. We wouldn't be allowing a mode of transportation like that in the building unless there was an accommodation needed.
Okay, well, that, that's a misunderstanding that I had as I read the document then, is when I saw scooter, I thought it meant one of those electric scooters that se, some seniors and other disabled use. I didn't realize it was like a street scooter.
You're just so familiar with all the branding.
I know all the, yeah, I know all the.
I think the name that you're referring to is rascal.
Rascal? Oh, yeah.
At least I've heard of it.
Maybe, I don't know.
But no, so that allows us an opportunity to determine what that is, right? So in working with that patron and, and going back and forth with that person, it was like, okay. We, we've seen it, we've seen it being used in the building, and it was called out that I'm sorry, you can't be bringing that in. And then he was asking for us to be, to consider.
Well, maybe it should be clearer then in the policy as to what a scooter i- is, or, I mean, the definition, or we don't wanna get into.
I don't think we wanna get in the weeds. I think we should really deal with the fact that if someone was identifying that I need it for an accommodation, this really was.
I just got the impression that, that maybe we weren't allowing these smaller wheelchairs.
No, we are. If you need it for accommodation and for mobility, absolutely. What I was, what I determined from that particular patron was that was not the need.
Okay.
Yes. And I always would do that, you know, please explain to me, you know, what is it that you need? We'd be looking at the way the person would be utilizing it as well, and then questioning, oh, hey, normally we don't allow these in here, please. You know, tell us, and, and as you, as you saw in what I wrote back, the need was, I was at a concern for theft. We were able to address that. And then it was, well, I need to charge it. And I'm like, yeah, but that's not really what our charging capabilities are in the building. And I gave examples of what we do with charging. And that, I've not had any, uh, other responses since then, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I read it the same way you did the first time.
Did you?
Yeah.
I thought it was a wheelchair.
Does that, is that a clear now?
No, no, I, it was, it became very clear that this was, this was a kid with a scooter and was concerned how much he spent for it. And he, he's, needs charging, and he's charging at school.
Yeah. And I totally get that. I, I was sympathetic with him, and, and I thought, okay, I know a lot of libraries that have invested in some locks, so that we can help you out with that if you forget it, or, cause I, I wouldn't want something stolen from the library either, or have that concern. But let me help you with addressing that problem.
But they can't charge it. I mean, charging needs to be done at home, right?
He didn't want to, he wanted to charge it in my small meeting room. And, and you're talking, you know, that, I don't even think something like that could handle that kind of voltage. I, I didn't, I don't wanna take on those risks. We don't know that, and so that's really not how we would provide that use, this charging here, yeah.
They have, like a bike rack or something like that?
Yeah, we have bike racks, and we, we look specifically for electric scooter locks that went with that type of mobility need. I know. Interesting, right?
Yeah.
I have a question about the, the public restrooms.
Sure.
Is there a reason that you're spe- specifying both the first and second floor instead of saying, is that all of the public restrooms? Like, do you need to specify, including the first and second floor men's and women's restroom?
Um, are you on page eighty-seven?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page eighty-seven, yes, down under restrooms, the second bullet, yes. I was just curious why it was spelled out that way instead, if it's, is it all of the public restrooms have them?
It's not, because the, the family restroom on the first floor does not have an automatic, so we're calling it out.
Okay, so that's why you specified, okay.
Yep, great question. Yep.
In page number eighty-nine, it says approved by Novi Library on September twenty-sixth. Is the date wrong, or?
Oh, no, that, that was just for date of today, but if you're not approving it, it'll be in October. Yeah.
Or whatever day we do approve it.
It's the day that you're, you're viewing it for the first time, but when you approve it, it'll actually become the date you approve. So if you are comfortable and you wanted to today, but because it's a brand-new policy, I'm not looking for approval if you're not comfortable. It's completely up to you tonight.
I would rather wait till we have a full complement, the board members, too.
Okay. Okay, so.
Completely fine with that. You'll see it back in October.
And your welcoming comments anytime from the board member.
Yes, yes, if you have any.
Don't have to wait for another board meeting or so to give to the comments.
Please feel free to send me any comments or questions related to it, and then I will try, I will try to, um, find those answers and also put them together then in, in the next board pack, if it tends to be a number of them that you want, that you have. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to the third item, approve revisions to the patron, the patron behavior policy, ninety-one through ninety-six, and I'll hand off.
And it really is very minimal, if you look on page ninety-one, it's actually just striking out the information about animals and giving a more concise description, and this is from working with our attorney specifically. We've unfortunately had some people that have brought in animals that are not, that are not specific, you know, and certified. And so we've, we've had to address that. And it, and we have a number of concerns. I mean, there's people that are afraid of animals. They're afraid that could an animal not be in its best behavior, what, you know, what will that be? How will they react when they're coming into a public building? So we're trying to be conscious of that. And this will allow us, if approved tonight, to also put some signage on the front door that before people walk in, we have something that says, this is what's allowed.
So we approved this policy back in June.
You did.
But so the only.
This is the only thing.
Difference is what's in red.
Correct.
And what's happening in that whole industry is there's a finer distinction going on between support animals and emotional supporting, that, that's not the right, but, but emotional comfort animals.
You are correct.
Yes. Making the distinction between the two.
Now, the dialogue here is identical to the dialogue in the previous policy.
Yeah.
Do we, do we anticipate any changes in previous policy that will affect this, or?
The, the previous policy.
The accommodation policy.
Oh, in accommodation. Yeah, so if you approve that, you'll see, yes, we're, we would be keeping it the same in the accommodations.
And you've already answered one question that I had about any animals for programming.
Yeah, we're trying to keep them, we're trying to keep them the same.
You want this, should we be approving this policy tonight, and the other policy waiting, or?
Well, my, do you have any concerns with that particular part?
I don't have any concerns with that.
Yes. And, right. I wouldn't think you would, and, and then it's just approving, knowing that you've already had that language discussed. You can, you can, you know, ignore that part.
It's the housebroken word is, is in this policy, so that's the question. You gotta come up with a different word for that.
We can, we can actually make that change if you think there will be. I've, I've had, I did.
Maybe there isn't anything, I don't know.
I really didn't find a very good term yet.
Okay, that's fine.
I would be comfortable, Mark, if we have to do that, that's just a quick one word. And we can make note of it. I can put that actually, that notation in for next time, if we find that there is a word, and, and then highlight it for that change. Cause it's one word.
Okay, so, well, then I, I'm, the, the tea leaves that I'm reading is, we ought to get a motion to adopt the patron behavior policy now?
Yeah.
I'll entertain that motion.
So. I'll second.
Okay, sorted that out quickly. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the patron behavior policy. Um, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll ask that you read, call the vote.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Helvangus says yes, and trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Page ninety-seven, which is the social media policy, this took a major overhaul. And it has been a while since we had looked at this policy. Um, so I provided both the old policy and the new. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to entertain any questions. And, and if, but if, and if you don't feel comfortable with it because there, there have been changes, I'm also okay with bringing it back in October. But we felt pretty comfortable with what we gave you. Um, you know, it's just, it, it really was after, um, being reviewed. It's just, just a major cleanup as a, as a result to social media and how we use it.
Isn't this contained in another policy that we passed back when we were looking at all the other policies?
Um, well, there's, for HR, there's a social media specifically. So this is different. This is your public policies. This is how we, yeah, this is how we work with the public when it comes to social media versus how we do it with our, with our employees. Yep.
An appropriate overhaul based on the old one, yeah, it's a lot more thorough.
We actually worked with the attorney for some examples of, of newer policies that are being used with libraries.
Well, I'll throw it out. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move to support. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt a social media policy contained on pages ninety-seven through ninety-nine. Any discussion?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
Um, Carla, would you take the vote?
Sure thing. Trustee Helvangus says yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Um, the fifth item for matters for library board action, which was amended in our agenda, would be to allow staff, um, to be, um, to go home or to be, in the, in the day would be five o'clock on Friday, um, November twenty-two, in order for them to be able to attend timely appreciation dinner.
So it would be one hour closing early, instead of six o'clock.
The library would close at five instead of six.
Close at five instead of six, yes.
Much easier way of saying it, the way I did it.
But you are being very thorough.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll go second.
Then it's been seconded, okay. Um, any, any discussion for closing the library at five PM on November twenty-two?
I can tell you that it would be very appreciated.
No discussion? Would you read the, call the vote?
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Helvangus says yes. Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
Um, I note the communications that are included in our packet. I don't, I don't need to discuss anything specific to them unless somebody wants to, but they're, the emails are in our packet that were received during the course of the month. And with that, I'll entertain.
Oh, I did have one question. The first one regarding, uh, the book return being closed.
Yes.
Did you happen to look and make sure that this person was on your email list?
On my email list? Oh, in terms of, um, getting the e-news? I did not. I could, I could look.
I just thought maybe that would be a good.
Absolutely. I never heard back from the person after I sent the information, but I definitely can check.
That's a really good point.
And then just say, you know, I've added your name, or I can add your name if you'd like to.
Absolutely. I will do that. Yep, not a problem.
And, and I understand our response, but I'm also somewhat sympathetic to the people that say there's a book return and kind of think it's available all the time.
Right.
Um.
But we do struggle. I mean, here's, here's where I'm stuck. You've given us the opportunity to be closed, which the staff appreciates, but then you're gonna make some come in in order, cause I gotta have staff come in and empty it.
Oh, sure, right.
In order to keep it, because it's way too much. The machine, if we're closed three days, the machine cannot handle what potentially could be returned, if we leave them open.
Um, if I recall correctly, and I can't remember what I did last week, but I thought there were different sized baskets and stuff that you could get. Now, I don't know if we can get different baskets with this machine, but i- is it worth looking into that this machine would accommodate different, I'll call them baskets, buggies, whatever, whatever they are. They're bigger, they're bigger, so they would hold more.
Right.
So that if, you know, maybe we could get a bigger basket that would hold three days of returns, or something like that.
And my answer to you is yes. However, I, we wouldn't do it until we get a new machine.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't do that until we're looking at.
The whole, the whole thing?
Upgrading, yes.
But, but, but I, I'm very sympathetic to the concern of that person, and we, we have a wonderful reason why we have the policy that we have. But I think in a lot of people's mind, if you have a book return, it's just.
Always.
It's always, it's open twenty-four hours a day. If that's why it's there, because libraries close at various points in time.
Right. But also, I, I just wanna also share, I mean, I, I realize they wanna get it out of the house, right? They're, they're thinking about it at that moment. They're not being charged any fines, so they don't have to worry about it being late anymore, cause we don't do that. Um, and, um, and it's not actually due. When we work with T L N, and we turn over all the dates that we are closed, when you approve all that, never will those materials actually be due on the days that we're closed. So I appreciate that they wanna return it, cause they're just thinking about it at the moment, but it's not actually due that date, and, and again, it's not. But we can, Mark, absolutely, it's a fair question of when we look at the new machine, do we wanna look at larger return bins in order to accommodate that?
Could I, um, I've never really seen how it works behind the scenes.
Come and get a tour.
I'm just, well, I'm just wondering if maybe other board members have the same curiosity about what's behind the big door there, you know?
That's very interesting.
And I think.
No, remember it was like cut short or something like that?
Yeah.
Do you wanna?
I've seen the tour, I haven't seen it in action, but I've seen the.
I'm just thinking that maybe when we have, maybe the first budget meeting or something rather, maybe we could come earlier and just see some of the behind the scenes. I don't know where mailboxes are. I don't, I've never been back there, so. No, I've never been back there.
Maybe on October sixth?
No, I just. I, well, I've had a tour, but I've never gone back in the employee.
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe on open house, we can go?
Oh, I could, are you all gonna be at the open house?
I want to come.
Who's coming?
I would like to.
Are you all?
I'm, I'm trying to go.
I can't be at the open house.
Oh, well, fine. Complain about it and then don't.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, we can definitely give you a behind the scenes, absolutely.
I just always thought that was the employee area and I never made a request to go back there or look at anything back there.
I actually, when I give a, a, when I give a public tour, I take them behind there, so I'm sorry that you got missed if you didn't see anything.
Well, it's just I never really had occasion to.
It's kind of in operation.
It is.
I think providing something for them.
Well, it would help us to know what we're talking about, when we talk about book return and everything.
I would be happy to give you that.
Yeah, okay.
You got it.
Okay.
I'm going to be working Sunday if you want to come back. I'm happy to show them on Sunday.
Maybe I can.
Let me know.